Much, all those in favor? Okay, the motion to confirm the agenda is carried. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest with today's board agenda? Okay, seeing none, move on then to the approval of the minutes. I require a motion to confirm the minutes of the December the eighth, 2020 board meeting. So I require a mover and a seconder to confirm the minutes of this meeting. Okay, Leo, move and Mike, thank you very much. All those in favor? Yeah, the motion is carried to confirm the minutes of the December eighth, 2020 board meeting. Okay, at this time, we have a presentation that I know we're all looking forward to it, an update from the Medical Officer of Health regarding COVID-19, specifically in our community and probably in general from for the province. And I'll ask our director, Pino Bonney, to introduce the acting Medical Officer of Health, Dr. Robert Cushman.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. A pleasure to be here at our board meeting and a huge thanks to Dr. Cushman for not only his presence this afternoon and sharing some information as context for us, but his steadfast support of our district and sage advice for me, particularly during the course of really the entire pandemic. In particular, a special thanks to Rob for his advice during a period of time when we experienced one of the first outbreaks of a school in the country, let alone the province, and Rob was instrumental in helping us navigate through that and seeing our way through it as successfully as we possibly could at that point in time and since. So again, a huge thanks to Dr. Cushman. Appreciate you being with us, Rob, and look forward to the presentation. And John, just a quick heads up, Rob sent a quick note around his mic. Anyway, we can adjust that from our end or is that?
No, I suspect it might be the similar thing that we had with Mary. I'm unable to unmute him. So it could be just a reboot as we had with Mary or selecting, as Steve noted, the different mic.
Can you see me?
That's a great start.
We can see you, Rob. Great to have you.
I think the problem was I had you in. Can you hear me, Pino?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great. Yeah, something was wrong with the other computer and then we got that sonar and had horrible. Anyway, sorry, I apologize. So has the echo left also?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, my apologies, folks. Jonathan, can you put those slides up for me? Great technologies. So let me just say that it's been a pleasure to work with you. Yeah, we got off to a, it was funny, all the planning we did during the summer. And then, of course, with fellows, we got off to a real quick start. And so we became, yeah, Pino and I were sort of joined at the hip there and trying to, trying to avoid as much limelight as we could. Evidently, we both had friends from Vancouver who'd seen us or from the British Columbia that had seen us on the air. So I'm not going to, fair to say that you all read the news and you know where we are, that we're in trouble. The good news in Canada or the improving news in Canada and Ontario and Ottawa is that there's been an improvement since the lockdown on Boxing Day. And we're now seeing that with cases. Unfortunately, we don't really see it with hospitals and ICUs and deaths till sometime later. Suffice it to say, though, in Renfrew County, we're doing better than ever. We have had one case in the past week and we only have two people self-isolating right now. And we have no outbreaks currently, so we're doing really well. And what we're seeing here is that, as I said earlier, Boxing Day and you add two and a half weeks and you start to see results. So we're hovering just below 300. If you think of one death per 100, unfortunately, it was a tragedy, but we weren't surprised by our second death last week. We have nobody in hospital. That individual was in hospital for some time. So we're doing well. As I said, what's more, what's really germane for you, which you probably know by heart, is that of the 25 cases, 10 staff and 15 students, there are some in secondary schools. So the real number for you folks for the two boards is nine staff and 13 students. And I, I think this is really, this is a very important statistic because clearly the students must outnumber the staff. I don't know, 10, 20, 30 to one, you tell me, but look how close the numbers are. And this is something which I've been saying for all along is that people bring this in to their workplace and kids are less contagious than adults. And what we have seen too, unfortunately, we know, Pino and I know this from what happened around Labor Day, and I've seen it time and time and time again, unfortunately, in Renfrew County is that people let down their guard during the social hours at work. So that, if you're going to have two messages for your constituency, it would be no travel. Interesting, right now, we have two high-contact cases, high-risk contact traces, cases we're investigating are both related to an outbreak in an eye doctor's office in Ottawa. So you see that this virus travels. And it, when you let down your guard, it seizes an opportunity. So there you go. There are the numbers. And I think I'll get to, I have one more slide, actually. As you can see, we've done a lot of testing. We've been very fortunate that our test numbers are about 100 and 200 positive. We did have some problems, which I'll show you further on in terms of, actually, I'm not so sure I have that slide, but anyway, let me just tell you that our numbers have always been less than 1% except during, when we had the outbreak with the small community, religious community in the Cobden area. Then they spiked to about 2.5% that week or 10 days. And then also around Christmas, we saw some, we were peaking in, coming in around 1.5%. So if you really think about it, Renfrew County, we're doing very well in terms of the number of positive tests, roughly, you know, 300 for 53,000. So we are, you could even say we're over-testing, and I'll get to that in a minute. Okay, so next slide, please, Jonathan. Oh, and folks, sorry, sorry. Let's have questions as we go along because there is a mouthful here. So you're drinking from a fire hydrant, I guess, so that cliche. So actually, Jonathan, if you back up, sorry about that. Okay, so does anyone have any questions before we move on? All right, next slide. Okay, so fair to say that wave one in Renfrew County was a dress rehearsal. I mean, look at how low the monthly totals are. And then we started to see, just when you wanted to go back to school, we started to see some more activity. And sure enough, look at the climb right through. And we really paid a price in December for all the pre-Christmas activities. And as I said, January, because of the Boxing Day lockdown, has been much better. And frankly, of those cases, of those 30 cases in January, the vast majority were before the 15th of January. So it just shows you that, you know, public health measures and lockdowns make a difference. And I know some people are saying, how can we keep the economy going? Well, the way to keep the economy going is to keep COVID at bay. It's that simple. And here you see, you see the outbreak setting. So, Pino, the good news is you weren't alone. You were in good company for outbreak setting, that, for outbreak settings, and we had a number of workplaces. Probably the worst one was with the CNL and Atomic Energy in Deep River. Again, it just shows you what can happen when, when the virus gets into a workplace. And of course, you're a big one with schools, but I think, actually, your results are really good. And I'm going to come to that, how I think you actually distinguish yourselves from other workplaces. Now, you can't, you don't want to get complacent, let me tell you. But, but you, I'm really impressed, actually, by how well the schools have done compared to other workplaces. So basically, what you're seeing on these slides is the increase and now the, hopefully, fingers crossed that with the lockdown and if we can keep things up, that we won't ever get to December numbers again, so see, hopefully. Okay, and on we go, Jonathan. So this basically shows you the same thing, and you can see the school cases have been isolated here. They're in that, they're in the, those two, that sort of brownish color. And again, they're not all your cases. We had some, or the two boards, sorry, you and the Catholic board, but also we had some activity at Algonquin also in December. So by and large, and we also had, as I said earlier, a number of workplaces. So I'll keep going, but this just shows you the sort of, the graph in terms of where the activity was. Okay, next slide. And this is where we come to you. So you had 22 cases in the school boards, and that's, that's only 7.4%. Now granted, schools have been closed for a month, but I still think that is very impressive. As I said before, there was a 60/40 split between students and staff, but you certainly don't have a 60/40, 60/40 split in terms of the numbers. So it shows you that how important it is to keep, keep this, keep staff from bringing this into the school as well as the students. So there you have it with this graph. The total is 22. You have 13 and 9. Here's where I have a little trouble, is that there were three school outbreaks. And yet, we identified close to 650 high-risk contacts and only 13 cases with one positive case. And we had a number of school buses also, because as you know, the kids come to more than one school on a school bus. And what I'll say to you here is, I think we, a lot of people were concerned about schools right away. I think it's fair to say that there was actually too much emphasis and too much onus and too much light sort of shed on you folks. Oh gee, you know, kids are going back to school in September. This is going to be a disaster. Well, you know what? It wasn't. And in fact, what, hindsight's 2020, but I think we sent too many people home to go into isolation for 10 to 14 days. I mean, if you really think about it, you know, how many extra cases did we get above and beyond 22? And yet, we sent close to 650 people home, 637 people home to isolate, and yet we found very little. So this is, you know, hindsight, and our numbers are good now. And there's certainly a lot of evidence from other places that schools are not the big culprit. But I think it's very telling, and we knew, we knew, as I said, we got off to a bad start with fellows, so we were really pretty aggressive about this. But in hindsight, I think we were actually a little too aggressive. Now, that doesn't mean we're going to, you know, get complacent. We have to be very conscious of how we go about this. And in that we're one of seven districts in Ontario where kids have been allowed to go back to school early. Again, we don't want to get cocky. We want to be very careful as we move forward. Okay, so next slide, please, Jonathan. So here you have the number of schools. I think, what did I say before? Three, six, seven, yeah, 13. And I don't, I mean, some of these say Catholic and whatever, but you, you know who you, you know who you are. I don't have to tell you, right, Pino? Okay, so there's a pretty good distribution here. Keep going. Next slide, Jonathan. So yes, this is what, again, this just underscores what I said early, that almost 70% of your cases were acquired outside the school. So we only think seven, seven cases were acquired in the school, and yet for every case, we almost sent 100 people home, tested them, you know, kept them out of school. So you can see that, that really took a toll. That took a toll on the kids' education. That took a toll with the anxiety and all these other things. So it just shows you that going forward, we have to keep that back of mind, and hopefully that'll educate us as we go forward. We actually looked at this. I was concerned about this, and I asked staff to look at it before we knew schools were reopening. And we've been talking about how we, how with this information in hand, we might do different, do business differently at the margins. But as I said, we want to get, we want to be very careful as we start. And also, we've always got to pay attention to how much activity there is in our community. Okay, next slide. Yeah, this, this basically, when you look at this, 42 high-risk contacts per school case. So again, some great work was done here, but the yield was pretty low. And again, you know, I often say that the collateral damage from COVID is worse than COVID itself, and I think this is one of the examples here. So I'm not going to, I'm not saying we're going to change things overnight, but it's just, as I said, it's, it keeps us, it's educational, and hopefully it'll guide us as we move forward. On we go, Jonathan. And to three outbreaks, as you know, the, the province said that if you have two or more cases that are basically connected to each other, you get an outbreak. So as you can see of these, you know, we had one staff and one student, but the other ones were little, were more concerning with four students and the other one with four staff and one student. And I think actually, again, I think with fellows, I think we, we did the right thing. We were, when you think of four staff and how the staff migrate, that it could have been, we could have had bigger problems right away. So it was too bad we had to send people home for two weeks, you know, that sort of three days after school started. But, and Pino and I, it's very interesting, Toronto, you know, they, they, I had to, I had to be pretty forceful to say that this is what we're doing come, come hell or high water. Because they, you know, reputational risk being the first in the province and whatever. And I always find Toronto, they either want us to, you know, the leash for us is a little, either too long or too tight, you know, it's never what we really want. But it's one of those things we just have to deal with. So here again, you see the cases and what we had to do. Okay, Jonathan. So the, this just gets back to what we know in general from other places. Basically, what they're saying is, if, the evidence is that if you do a good job, the infection rates are low from child to child and from child to adult. Okay, and in fact, this is what I was saying earlier, the adult-to-adult transmission is more common. And this is what we saw in fellows. So again, schools, as I said, they, they sort of, people were concerned because these are large areas of congregation. And also historically, very interesting, kids are seen as kind of very, how would I say, better than average or worse than average, I guess, vectors for some other infectious diseases. So, but typically with COVID, we're learning as we're going. And, and I think the last point here is really important is that by and large, what's happening in the schools is what's happening in your community. It's a reflection. And so this is what we have to keep in mind. And this is why when we opened schools and we saw that we'd had zero cases for a number of days, and even though we're on the second day today of school, as I said, we've had one case in a week. We saw the week before this was, was telling. We knew things were even going to get better, so we hoped that things would continue to get better. So this is it, basically. What you see in your schools is a reflection of what's going on in your community. But if you take the appropriate are a better place to be than a lot of other places, workplaces. And there's very good evidence that there's not that much transmission that goes on in schools. And, you know, if I'd known that in September, after we got through fellows, Pino, I, you know, we might have had, we might have had a different approach. We might not have sent 637 folks home, but as I said, this will just guide us as we go forward. Next slide, Jonathan. So this is just a wrap-up. There've been 22 cases. Almost 70% got the infection outside of school. There were three outbreaks, but very small outbreaks. And one, in fact, was an outbreak because it met the ministry definition. And we were very confident with very little activity in our community and a very low positive testing rate, that we were in full support that schools open this week. And we're very confident that we can continue to keep the schools open, provided we keep the rates of COVID down in our community. And of course, that means that nobody gets complacent. We all keep to work hard. So I just want to thank everybody. I think you've done a tremendous job, the, the board, the schools, the staff, the students and the parents. Because let's face it, our kids, your kids have suffered enough. I mean, I'm just distraught by what I'm seeing from sick kids and, and CHIO in terms of whether it be bulimia or suicides or, oh, the other thing is too, the vaping that's been increasing. So there's, there's been a real mental health toll on these kids. And they, and not to mention how much education they've lost. So I just, I just want to say, you have my assurances that you're doing a good job. Keep doing the good job and keep mobilizing your community. And, you know, don't put the naysayers, calm the naysayers down, and we're going to have to wait for vaccination. Unfortunately, it's going to come slowly. But it's not, the, the kids in the schools are not where we really should be concentrating most of our energy. There's a lot of other things we can do, and it's what the kids and what the staff bring from home into the schools that really makes the difference. Thank you.
I was muted. Do we have any questions for Dr. Cushman or comments?
I see Mike with his hand up.
Brian, can you hear me?
Oh, Mike, yes.
Yeah, Mike, and Dr. Cushman, one of the local trustees for the board. My question is, we're about six weeks, six weeks away from our March break. And as we all know, we had a healthy spike at Christmas. Any words of, any words of wisdom, because we've got a captivated audience right now in school? Anything our teachers or administrators should be saying to, you know, a couple of weeks prior to March break? I'm assuming, I think I know what you're going to say, but I'd just like to, maybe there's a, maybe there's a point or two that you have advice for us.
Well, I'll make the first one. We're from a community. You might not like my second one. My first one is that no travel, no travel, no travel. And I think the Prime Minister is finally waking up to this. I mean, I told you, it's a consistent theme for us, so this is just not on. And my second one, this is, this is where you're not going to like me. The kids have missed so many, so much school. Why don't we just keep on going? But maybe Pino didn't like that.
That ends with some complications, Rob.
I told you, I went out of my territory there. I should retract that statement.
Dr. Cushman, it's Mike again. It's funny because I've talked to several people in the community and they've actually brought that up to me, you know, where we, where people usually try and plan ahead. We only pivot when we have to, but I've had, I've had several people mention the same thing to me. So anyway, kudos.
Okay, I think Steve Block had a question and then Susan.
Hi, Dr. Cushman, Steve Block. I'm just wondering, and I'm not going to hold you to this, but you know, if you were to take your best guess, when do you think we might see kids be able to return to sports? You think we'll be there by September or is it going to be later?
Oh, that, okay, well, I'm glad you gave me September as a month. Made my life easy. I think so. I would hope so. I think, what I'm thinking is that we have to get through this winter. I mean, let's face it, and you have to get through the school year. I think we finally, we administered our first vaccine today in Renfrew County this afternoon. We were up in the Valley Manor Long-Term Care Home. So they're a long time coming, and we're getting actually less than we'd anticipated in the next few weeks because of the slowdowns, which you've been reading about, the supply, the manufacturing slowdowns. So, but anyway, Stephen, to the point, I think we're going to be doing a lot of immunizing in May, June, July and August, and I think that's when we're going to start to see a difference, I hope.
Yeah, that'd be great. I hope so, too. It'd be nice to see them be able to get back to some semblance of regular life. So thanks for that.
Exactly.
Okay, Susan, you had a question.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the conversation today, Dr. Cushman. It's been much appreciated. I know there's been quite a bit of talk about doing more in-school testing or quick or rapid testing of students. Could you say a word about that and what your thoughts are on, on whether or not that's actually going to happen and what the validity or usefulness of it might be?
Okay, that, thank you for that question, Susan. We've been waiting for this, and I've been following it. And, you know, some people say you have to be a health professional to do this. And there's also some talk about, oh, these things are great, but can they actually do, you know, do they have capacity to do 100 tests? I mean, how, how efficient are they with respect to the numbers? So I think for the schools and for, for instance, for surveillance testing in places like schools and long-term care homes, these, these are excellent tools. And I'm a little, personally, I'm a little disturbed that they haven't been out there already. That it's, but we've been told it's coming. As I said, there are some issues as to, you know, how good they are and who can use them and how quickly they can turn. It's one thing to turn a test around in 20 minutes, but how many, how many tests can you turn around in 20 minutes? You know what I mean? That type of thing. So there's some implementation issues, but I'm, any, anything we have, I mean, this, this, the standard test we have now, which is the gold standard, it takes, even if things are really good, it takes a day, and it's much more expensive and, of course, much harder to administer. So I'm, my line is, bring it on. More is better.
Any other questions for Dr. Cushman?
Brian, I just had a comment at the end, but I'll await other questions before I make a final comment.
Jazlin has a question there, Brian.
Okay, Hannah or Jazlin, sorry.
Thank you. I just have a question. I'm not sure the source of this, but I've heard teachers mention that one in four elementary students carry COVID-19. I just want to see if this is true, just because this has gone around schools.
No, no, that, what they may say is that, that one in, I think what they're trying to say is for every case, there's a certain number which you don't detect. All right, so people have used the number as up to 50% are asymptomatic. So if you look at our numbers, I mean, Vera Etches very early on said that, well, we have 10 cases. Does that really mean there are 1,000 in the community? You know, do I add two zeros? I would say we have a much better handle on this right now. And I, I think there's very little activity out there, mostly because of the Boxing Day lockdown. But to your point, Jazlin, that the, the numbers aren't, I wouldn't say they're the tip of the iceberg. You know, how big that tip varies from time to time and place to place. I mean, and we, the other thing about us is we've been, we probably have the best contact tracing amongst the, if not the best, amongst the best contact tracing in the province. Now, that, there's a reason for that, is that it never got away from us. You know, I mean, poor Peel and Toronto, they, they were always chasing, you know, the horse had left the barn, so to speak, but we were always, because of our volume and because of the number of people we put on these teams, that we are very that we are very good at doing this. The nurses are fantastic. And they've been able to do it. I mean, we hear horror stories about the, the contacts that aren't even followed up in other jurisdictions. And for sure, some of those people must be positive. So again, I, I think, you know, the numbers don't tell the whole story, but certainly that number you gave me is, is, I don't think that, you know, I'd refute that very, very readily. With vigga, as they say.
Thank you.
Okay, and Brent, you had a question?
Yeah, just a quick comment for Dr. Kushman. We've had great cooperation from the nurses and from the leadership team at the Rep. County Health Unit. Very, very much appreciated. Especially, I just want to make a personal shout out to Patty Smith. Got calls from Patty on the weekends, later in the evening. She doesn't seem to take many breaks. So that's very much appreciated, that, that cooperation amongst our organizations. I just wanted to make that quick note.
Well, thank you, Brent. And I certainly recognize your name and I don't think I've really seen you. I may have seen you before, but yeah, you've worked hard and it's been really good teamwork. I, as I laugh with Pino, we got in with you, we got thrown into it pretty quickly, but we're doing well. And yeah, they're doing, they were so happy that the nurses were so pleased that we were one of the regions that was able to go back to school. So thank you for that. I'll send that on because certainly it's a great team.
Okay, Marjorie, you had a question or a comment?
Yes, thank you. Dr. Kushman, I believe I heard on a local newscast that you had lobbied in favor of having Renfrew County be one of the areas that would open up. If that's true, I want to thank you very much on behalf of our students, including my grandchildren, and also on behalf of their families.
Well, it's funny. Thank you, Marjorie. I don't think I told Pino I was doing that, but anyway. I, I, and of course, when you lobby, you don't know who's listening, but anyway, there was a, there was a movement afoot. Actually, Vera Etches in Ottawa was leading this and she, poor Vera, they, her schools are not open. But she hasn't quit. She's still at it. So yeah, we, no, we looked at this and we looked at our numbers, Marjorie, that basically what I've shared with you in the presentation. And we figured with the background numbers and the good track record that certainly the kids should be, you know, they need to go back to school.
Right on.
Any other questions or comments? At case Pino.
We had Leo, we had Leo.
Oh, Leo, oh, sorry, Leo, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Hi, Dr. Kushman. So I wear many hats. I just want to say thank you on behalf of, well, the schools and school board. I also help run the daycare in town, the Children's Garden. So we certainly were in contact almost from the very beginning in March with the emergency childcare. So your staff and the health unit was I wears as a paramedic. So just working with the health unit just to get the swabbing done. And then also now just with the start of the vaccinations. So I just think for, just for everybody here, just if you can elaborate a little more on the vaccinations, like how long it'll take for them to work once we actually have them in our bodies? How likely would it be that we would get a case of, you know, once you have the vaccine in? How likely would it be to get a case of COVID? How intense would it be? What percentage of people within the county do we need to get vaccinated? In order for us to have like that herd immunity? And then just the vaccinations of children, how low are you going to go down to vaccinate the children?
Okay, well, Leo, you've asked me all the hard questions there, so thank you. First of all, let me say I'm glad someone mentioned daycare. It often goes unnoticed. I mean, it's so important. And yes, we work very hard and the, the county worked very hard to assume that, you know, to assure that as many spots were open as possible. Okay, these questions, these are tough questions. The first one is that this vaccine is very effective. I mean, five, 90 to 95% effectiveness is much better than a lot of other vaccines. We don't know how long it's going to last and we hope it's good for all these variants, but just in terms of what we do know. The, the other thing is that yes, it can mitigate illness. So and I think it's probably almost 100% effective in terms of preventing death. So you can see it works. You know, it works its way all the way along. So I mean, if one in 100 people are going to die from this disease, you know, it probably is going to probably going to prevent 19 out of 20 of those even. So you can just see, or maybe even more. So you can see how effective it's going to be. As for herd immunity, that's the big question. It, I mean, we don't know. I mean, people are talking about anywhere from, you know, 65 to 90%. This is a wily virus. For measles, you need 95%. We don't think it's as bad as measles, but somewhere in between, you know, 65 and 90. The, the needle vacillates there. We don't know. Only time will tell. As for when we're, the, right, right now, this is a big production issue. I mean, we are, you know, we gave out our first 70 vaccines today. So we're waiting. My, my concern actually is we're going to, you know, come sort of May 1st, we're going to have four times as much vaccine as we can, we can use in a day. It's sort of going to go from nothing, you know, to a fire hydrant. I was hoping to have a more gradual buildup, but we'll see, we'll see. I mean, we're just happy to have it. We have an all hands on deck process here. We're hospitals, paramedics, public health, primary care, pharmacists. I mean, we've really, we don't need them now for long-term care. Long-term care can pretty much do their own. But once we start moving to the general population, we'll need everybody. I've always said too, sticking a needle in someone's arm is probably 5 to 10% of the work. So we can even use, you know, good citizens who want to help with paperwork and registration and then some other medical or healthcare people to look at consent forms. So there's a lot to be done. So there you go. We're just, yeah, we, but it's going to take a while. I think the earlier question was, you know, when do you think kids can go back to sports? And the answer there was September seemed like a good bet. So I think we need, we have a lot of work to do between now and September. Not only keeping COVID at bay with all our public health measures, but also getting the vaccination into people's arms. Oh, and the other question was kids. Yeah. That's another one. As you know, you know, no one under 18 has been tested yet. The good thing about this is that they should be able to, hopefully they're doing some parallel, some additional trials. Why this is going, while this is proceeding. So we should have that evidence pretty quickly. The other interesting thing about COVID is that one of the reasons why these trials were done so quickly is there was so much disease out there that they were able to show a big, big difference very quickly. And so hopefully there's some of that going on now where, when COVID is so prevalent with, you know, vaccinating teenagers, but I'm not, I'm just trying to run a sleepy little health unit during my retirement. So I'm, which is not sleepy these days.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Chair Morris, I have a question.
Pino, I'll turn it over to you then.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Nick, Dr. Kushman, trustee for our family of schools. I just want to say, send my gratitude to what you've, your staff done at the health unit over the course of the pandemic. I just picked up in your comments earlier regarding increase in mental health, suicide, depression, anxiety, all this stuff that we don't want to talk about in children. I'm just wondering if the Renfrew County Health Unit has specific plans for mass community programs for mental health supports? Currently or post-pandemic? If there will be a time where we'll be saying post-COVID.
Well, interesting question, Nick. We actually just released a report on mental health in Renfrew County. I think it was either late December or early January. Of course, probably didn't get much traction because of COVID. But we've, we, we really, I think it's fair to say in, in 2019, we really started to look at mental health more than we'd ever done before at the health unit. And with a lot of the coalitions that are out there to become more actively involved. And this report is, it's a very in-depth report with a lot of very good messages and, and the findings. And as I said, unfortunately, COVID not only hijacked the agenda, but it made things worse. So but I think, I think once we get out of this, that mental health will have a, probably a bigger priority than ever.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Dr. Kushman.
Okay, again, any other questions or comments? Okay, Pino, turn it over to you.
Thanks through you, Mr. Chair. Just a huge thanks once again to Dr. Kushman for your time this afternoon, for speaking to us, for answering our questions so, so forthrightly and, and providing us such rich information to help guide us. I also want to take the opportunity to build on Brent's comments. A huge thanks to all of your staff. And a thanks to Superintendent McIntyre as our, our point person for the connection with the local health unit. And to Jonathan Lattaroot, our communications manager, for the interaction again with the health unit and all the communications. You know, it's times like, and you think of all the things that could have also gone wrong beyond the issue you were dealing with. And I think we eliminated a lot of those thanks to the collaboration between our district and the health unit. So my gratitude to you and your staff, Dr. Kushman, and to Brent and John and the whole senior team on our end. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Pino, and it ain't over till it's over. So we've got this great team. Let's keep working together.
On behalf of the board trustees, Dr. Kushman, I'd like to thank you for your presentation today. Like to thank you for all that you and your team do for our schools and our community. And especially like to thank you for reminding us of our five minutes of fame nationally with the fellows break. You know, your messaging is, is clear and you really are the face in Renfrew County of the fight against COVID-19. And in our community, and we appreciate everything you do for us and our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Have a great meeting, folks.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, for, we just had a great presentation and we got another one coming up. I'd like to turn it over to our director, Director of Education, Pino Befoni. And he's going to introduce our next pair of speakers.
This is a very exciting board meeting day with we just had and with the upcoming one. Very, very quickly, I'll turn it right over to our communications team. The fabulous Jonathan and Hannah, who have really worked diligently on this particular initiative in terms of a re, refresh of our website. I want to thank them in advance for all that they've done. And I know this is a work in progress. It's always under construction in terms of being a website with all the key information it holds. So I'll turn it right over to Manager Lattaroot and Coordinator McMillan and allow them to, to reveal and launch our, our website.
Thank you, Pino. Thank you, Mr. Chair. After 16 months, we're finally here. We worked through a lot of, a lot of items over the last 16 months, including what we just heard about in terms of the pandemic, with pandemic, which distracted us to an extent, but I'm happy here nonetheless today to be able to share this with you. Earlier this morning, the site went live. So I'm, I believe most of you or some of you have, have seen it. The project involved every department and dozens of staff who really helped the shape define and really ultimately land on the content of the site. The site has a fresh contemporary look. And I think it, it'll be something that will help our, our visitors, our communities, all the stakeholders as they engage us and visit it. It has an improved site map structure in terms of being able to navigate and understand where information is, which ultimately means finding information faster, which is very important. Another small item is, well, small in the sense that relative to other sites, contemporaries nowadays, but new and important to us, is that it's compatible with smartphones and tablets, which, which is an important component. As we all know today, these things are mini computers in our, in our pockets. And that's really how we, how we engage one another and find information. As Pino and others have said previously today, and I'll say it now, I want to thank the website project team of Hannah McMillan and Mike Godden for all their hard work and dedication on this huge undertaking. To complete this sort of task, a project of this size and scope and, and complexity is not, is, is really a testament to their dedication and professionalism. I also want to extend my gratitude to all the, the staff who contributed to this. Certainly the, the superintendents for engaging with my team on this and helping us trickle down, as it were, to the respective department leads and our experts, resident experts, so that they can review, they helped us review the full catalog of all the content that we had on our pages and sub-pages, which I know was a big task. I know Hannah in regular updates with me certainly communicated the extent of that in terms of going through all that content. A few of the features that this website has, it has more ways to report an issue or request information so that, that responsiveness is an important component of this site, certainly. It's much more easily navigable in terms of finding those things. And also around the calendar, if you're on the site, and we'll, we'll get to that. I'll turn it over to Hannah in short time here. And she'll pop it up on the screen and go through a couple of items, but the calendar is a, is a central piece of that and being able to understand very clearly what is going on in the district and then being able to subscribe to that, to, to be able to get that driven to you. Other elements that I want to highlight, social media connectivity. So the ability now to link in real time, the conversations and dialogues and information we're sharing on our social media. And now having that reflected on the site, very, very important and useful. Visuals, a huge part of that on the site, they are now aligned with the content and and serve as anchor points for finding out where to go and what you need. You know, visuals are very important. And so we're glad to see those having such a great presence on, on the site. The other interesting thing, again, really for us behind the scenes right now, but you'll note when you go to it, there was a pop-up. You likely saw a little box that came up. That is a cross-platform available, a feature that we have. So when we move into our second phase, and I'll, I'll speak to that a little bit and Hannah as well, where we tackle the school sites, we'll be able to, when the conditions require us to, communicate emergency information. I say that in air quotes, but anything you think of like a snow day or a school closure or some form of, of information that is that we require to get across to all district stakeholders and all school communities. We can populate that and it comes up and lands on the site. So that's, so that's an, an important feature for us. And then of course, the enhanced accessibility features that we have embedded in this site as part of that renewal through our third-party provider, which was created of course by our existing website provider, which is E Solutions Group, based out of Waterloo. They've been around for quite a while, have lots of experience building sites. They started their work in the municipal sector and have moved beyond that, including into the school sector. So we have lots of other examples of their work to, to go check and see. I'm confident ultimately that the upgrades we've made will, will really be an enhancement to how we continue to have conversations with our stakeholders, be those the students, our parent guardians and our staff. I do want to say that as you probably found, and I know Hannah's received some emails and I've received some emails since it's gone live this morning. You know, this is a, websites are living creatures, as it were. So as you engage it, please provide your feedback to us. The benefit being we can amend it, change it, alter it in real time to make sure it's relevant. So that's just going to be the course of how we approach things, certainly this week as we get off the ground and then moving forward. Maybe we'll turn it over to Hannah and Hannah, if you want to share your screen and maybe walk through some of the, the highlights of this, this new site.
Sure, yeah. All right. Let me know when you're able to see it, folks.
We're good, Hannah.
Okay, perfect. All right. So as John mentioned, our new site launched today with very little issues, to be honest. E Solutions had kind of warned us that, you know, we might have a few things kind of going wonky over the next 24 hours. And while that's not over yet, things have been running fairly smoothly. And of course, we do have a few minor things to edit that I will work with E Solutions over the next week on, but very minor, so we're very impressed. So I'll just kind of go through the main navigation page because that is definitely our, this will be our top view page, obviously. So one of the main things that I wanted to highlight here that I think is really important is our staff portal. So if you remember from the old page or the old website, sorry, our staff information was kind of all over the place. It was wasn't just in one area for staff to find. And a big part of this new webpage was, you know, kind of tailoring our our website more to parents and students and our general community. So now our staff are able to log in to the staff portal and kind of find staff-related information all in one spot, which is huge for the webpage. And then, as John was mentioning, which I'll touch on a little bit later, is kind of that phase two and phase three, which is our staff site and also our other school webpages as well. So we have our our main banner up here, COVID advisory page, obviously, where we we're getting our COVID information, any school outbreaks or updates. It's front and center, as is required from the ministry. And then you'll notice down here, so unlike our other webpage, we worked with E Solutions and with our team at the RCDSB, some of our senior managers and superintendents to kind of deem what was the best for dropdown options to have. You know, as a school district, we have a lot of information. And this isn't new for E Solutions. And for us, they work with a lot of, you know, hospitals, they work with a lot of municipalities. So they're really good and they were really helpful with assisting us in how to lay this out in a way that was easy for parents and students and staff to access information and intuitive for them to access information so that we can, you know, best house all of that. We have a lot of, we have a lot of information that is readily available for the public. So this is our our four main parts of the site, which is our schools, parents and students, programs and learning in our district. So you'll see from the dropdown option, we have some great visuals, and then parents or students are able to click on what they're they're looking for. And I'll just go into one here just to show you. I mean, I know many of you have probably already been on the webpage. But what we really tried to do on this webpage is we tried to use authentic images for our RCDSB staff and students. This was really important to us and to our staff and students. So you'll notice here we have a banner for our Indigenous Ed page, which was our students' beating in EDPS. And then, as you'll notice, a big difference from our old webpage, things are laid out very nicely. It's clean. We have our main titles. We have our subtitles. You know, if you're a parent looking for information, it's a lot easier to find. It's also obviously a lot more visually appealing. And anything that you might be looking on is there clickable, whether it's a fillable PDF, as this might be, depending on what you're looking to fill out. And again, with our visuals of our students and appropriate visuals for the particular section. So we're really happy with the layout. We think, you know, we've tried to condense information where we can. We've tried to organize it in a way that is, you know, useful for people. And that was with the great work of our teams as well that assisted with with creating the content or the updated content. So moving down the main page, this would be our banner. So our banner, while we eventually hope to actually have a static video here, we weren't able to have the video for launch for a number of reasons, but one of the main reasons was just the video, the amount of bandwidth it was going to take with the amount of online learning and stuff that we have right now. It just wasn't highly recommended for E Solutions, so we we chose to go with our static images for now. But these will automatically, you know, they'll carousel through, so I'll just go through to to skip a little bit of time, but you'll see we've chosen to feature skilled trades, mental health, kindergarten registration, that started yesterday, and then, of course, inspired learning. So that's a, you know, these can be updated frequently and will be updated often. Next, and this was a very important part of our site, was our is our calendar. So our calendar was our number one search and viewed item on the RCDSB webpage. So we chose to put that kind of at the top. E Solutions helped us tailor the mock-up a little bit so we could actually bump this up a little bit, which is what we did. So you'll see, you know, kind of have the top, the first four days here, and then you can view the full calendar by clicking in. These are our static banner images, so these are able to change. We can move them to whatever we want. For the launch, we chose to feature kindergarten reg that started and, of course, inspired learning. And then this is my personal favorite part of the webpage for sure. One of the top feedbacks we received from parents and students and and community members was accessing the information was really difficult. You know, if we had to post something for a school closure or update, especially during, you know, labor and COVID, our site just wasn't, you know, it was it was old. It was wasn't able to to have that information readily available and right front and center, especially if you logged on and didn't happen to be on the right banner and you didn't know you had to click through. So I'm really look this 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 is really excellent. So we're able to feature top news stories. So, you know, we have our in-person learning. You look for more details, you're just going to click on it. And then it takes you right to the full press release or the information content or whatever we might be looking for. And something that I really like about this new section is that we can view all files and you're able to view any news story that we've ever posted or any publication that we've ever posted. It's listed by year here, you'll see. You can search if you know you're looking for something, you know, related. You're not sure what year it was in, but you know, you want to look for something under Indigenous Ed or you want to look for something on school closures, you're able to search it on our releases. So that's a really handy feature, and this is definitely my my favorite part of the new site. And then, of course, as John mentioned, we have our social media at the bottom. So we have our most recent tweets and posts would show up here on the main page. So in a nutshell, I'm just going to go back here. So I would encourage everyone to definitely take a tour through the webpage on your own time. We a few things to note. So we kind of, E Solutions has kind of given us a a 24-hour window. So things are going to appear kind of wonky for 24 hours. They sort themselves out when they don't sort themselves out, which is also a possibility. You know, we have some links that are broken and that kind of stuff. I'll be working with them for the remainder of the week to kind of clean those up and and make sure that those are working and and things are kind of good to go. We've had a few of them come in already, totally normal, and I'll be working with them to kind of resolve that over the next week or so. And then the next thing that I wanted to touch on was what John touched on briefly, which is phase two. So our webpage is now up and running. This was by far the most comprehensive part of what phase one, phase two, or phase three likely. But phase two will be all of our individual school sites. And they will basically be a smaller version of what you just saw. We're using the same sort of template and the same sort of look and feel that will maybe change in terms of colors and stuff from school to school so that they can be a bit more school branded, but that will be phase two when that starts. I'm not quite sure yet. We don't have a timeline within the next year. And then we'll be looking forward to having all of our front-facing platforms on the same platform and then moving to phase three, which will be the backend, which is just for staff and the staff portals. So I think I covered everything. John, was there anything I missed that you wanted me to touch on? Is there any questions from from the group?
Any questions or you're like me, I'm just mesmerized by it. It's just so good.
I I would like to say, and I just again, I full full thanks to to Hannah for for really leading this. But I also will say, use the opportunity to do a little bit chest thumping and I, because I know it's come up around sort of the contrasts, comparisons between us and and others in the same area. And I think if you were to look at this site compared to another site, it's striking in terms of that that as a a welcome or a front door per se. So I think this is this is important and it establishes our ground in terms of how we choose to engage and demonstrate ourselves to our existing families and potential families. So I just wanted to say that.
Susan, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, Nick.
I'm gonna let Susan go first because she's.
Pictures were freezing on me here, so. Susan, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you trustee Ed. And thank you so much to John and Hannah. You cannot imagine how much I want to just pop a bottle of champagne. I know that's not appropriate. But if I could, I would today because this is very exciting. I saw the the link this morning on Facebook by chance, and I was very excited about it. It looks great. I know there's work to be done still in some areas, but it looks amazing. I know that students and parents and staff too will find it so much more useful and so much more accessible for information when they need it. So thank you so much. I know it is a huge job. So thanks so much for all your hard work in the last last sixteen months, or maybe it's the sixty months. I'm not sure, but it seemed like a long time and and it's just wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay, Nick.
Yeah, just bouncing off Susan's comment there, just thank you to the communications team, manager Lattaroot and communications officer McMillan. It looks great. I actually spent like half my class this morning, like looking at our new website because I saw the tweet. I'm like, oh, this is what I'm going to do during class today. But it looks, it's clean, crisp and modern, and I think that's what our board is going for, especially with the new Inspire and Power Achieve last year, and now the new strap plan and the website is just going to look awesome. So I'm really excited to see that what what comes next in phase two and three. Thank you guys so much.
Yeah, thanks so much to the group. Thanks, Susan. I know it's a a project that you've been really dedicated to over the last year or two, so thank you for your support on that.
I have to say, on behalf of the board trustees, we are so totally impressed. It's it's a solid piece of of work. It just it it captures your interest and it has that wow factor. And it's something you just can't manufacture. It's it's there. So thank you so much for all your effort. And sixteen months, probably seen sometimes like sixteen years, but you know, you accomplished a tremendous amount and it really does showcase what we are all about here at the Renford County District School Board and what we're trying to do for our students. So thank you so much, both of you. Any further questions or or comments? Well, again, thank you very much, John and Hannah and.
Brian, it's Dave.
Oh, Dave. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I just wonder, will we have total control over this website or do we have to go back to the service provider? And will the schools have control over their their websites?
Yeah, so.
Go ahead, Hannah.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, that's a great question, Dave. So we we have total control over our webpage, so we make the edits. And if there's any edits, Mike is currently on paternity leave and he manages a lot of our our big edits. I do the, you know, I do, I can do the edits as well, but he he manages a lot of our our major edits. But we we make the edits whenever we need to make them and we can make them right in our office. And certainly, if there is any edits that we we can't make, we work with E Solutions and they make those edits instantly for us. But I'd say ninety-five percent of the edits we can make in our own office. And then when we talk about phase two, which is the school sites, it'll be both. It'll be kind of a fifty-fifty. So schools will, of course, we will be relying on them to update their sites in terms of events for their calendar, all those sorts of things that they would like to feature on their homepage. But a big part of this site was to be able to move a lot of that content that we're currently having to update in, you know, seventeen different places because it lives on the board site and then it lives in, the same information lives on all of our school sites in different areas. Kind of the big part of doing this project first was that, you know, kindergarten reg is going to be a perfect example is that's, you know, schools are going to be updating that. That's going to be on their individual school pages, but it's all going to link back to that main board page where we'll keep it edited there. Because really, there's there's not a ton of content that needs to be edited on an individual school-to-school basis. Definitely some events and that sort of thing, but the vast majority of it is edited at a board level. So, you know, this website kind of gives us that capabilities to keep it edited and current so that we don't have those ghost links or, you know, you're not looking for things that haven't been updated since 2013. That's kind of the beauty beauty of this.
Yeah, and I'll just add, everything that Hannah said is is accurate. And in terms of Mike's role, Dave, he that that was part of the importance of having him in place over the last year and a bit in terms of the training, train the trainer, and he was going out to schools and working with the school office staff and others to be able to to hone their skills such that they were able to maintain it at a minimum level in terms of the the front page of their school site. So you can think of the banner and some of the the language that that you see when you come to the site. So they have that ability. Certainly, between Hannah and I, we can, we can support them if they have challenges between now and Mike's return. But that doesn't change with the new site and moving into phase two as well. We hope to be able to have the staff take the reins, right? And because, again, they they are closest to the action, as it were, in terms of the activities and and understanding who they're speaking to in terms of school community. So we want them to have that power to be able to to make the changes.
Actually, I have one quick question. Now, I assume that this platform is quite a mature platform and it's, is it pretty stable? Your knowledge?
Stable in in what?
In terms of, like, sometimes, you know, you hear about platforms, you know, crashing or websites crashing.
Oh, I see. Yes. No, for sure. I mean, E Solutions, the group that we've been working with, they work with, you know, they work with huge school boards. They work with huge jurisdictions that have probably twenty to a hundred times the the web traffic that we would ever see on our webpage. So so, yeah, it the the platform that we have will certainly be able to to keep up with what we needed to do.
Okay, any further comments? Again, thank you. Tremendous work. We're so pleased. Thank you. Okay. Want to move on to committee reports and I'll ask Vice Chair David Kaiser to bring us the committee, the whole report.
We don't know, David. David is in the in the meeting, but he's showing as muted, so I don't know. Oh, there we go.
My apologies.
No problem.
The committee, the whole met virtually this afternoon, January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, and discussed the following items in open session. The first item was the Renford County Joint Transportation Consortium update regarding staggered bells in Zone Four Madawaska area. I'll get to that motion shortly. Second item was the year-to-date financial status update from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, led by our superintendent of business. Quick note, things in terms of a financial status regarding the COVID situation seem to be pretty good. We're in pretty good shape in Renford County at this particular point in time. Hopefully, things consider to be level and that status continues to be positive for us till the end of the school year. The third item was an update on the community use of schools. And the fourth item was the policy review committee update in terms of policy two and policy three. There was a motion tabled to the next committee, the whole meeting, after discussion on both policy two and policy three, just in terms of taking them back to the committee and reviewing them and bringing back to the board a couple of changes that were suggested by the Board of Trustees. There was one recommendation made and note to the trustees, my apologies on this, that the report does not include a motion made regarding the staggered bells. And I want to make sure that it is reflected in this committee, the whole report. So I'm, the the motion read, it was to make a motion to amend the committee, the whole. And and I'm, what I'm looking for is to add the missing motion regarding the staggered bells. And that motion would read as follows. The motion would be that the Board of Trustees with the Renford County District School Board adopt the report for the implementation of staggered bells for Zone Four Madawaska region for the, sorry, for the Zone Four Madawaska region starting in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Looking for a seconder for that motion, please. I believe, Mr. Chair, I can select Dave Shields as the seconder for that motion. I do believe that I can ask if there's any questions or comments regarding that motion before asking for a vote. Actually, the motion, I think, is part of the, the report. So I will still ask if there are any questions regarding the motion that was discussed this afternoon and missed on the report. Seeing none, I move that the board adopts this report, which includes the amended motion that we just went through.
Okay, thank you very much. Vice Chairperson Kaiser has moved the adoption of the committee, the whole open session report. And I require a seconder to adopt the committee, the whole open session report. Could I have a seconder?
I'll second that, Brian. Mike?
Okay, thank you very much, Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Seeing no dissent, the motion to adopt the committee, the whole open session report is carried. And thank you very much, Vice Chair Kaiser. Okay, we'll move on then to the report from the Program and Student Achievement Committee Open Session Report. And trustee Gannett.
Yes, through you, Chair Mr. Morris. The Program and Student Achievement Committee met on Tuesday, January twelfth, twenty-twenty-one, and the following items were discussed and reviewed. The ITC update, Superintendent Block, as well as Doug Feenig, spoke extensively to this report. Item number two, the district's achievement strategy is an update for the current school year. Superintendent Roland Cusino and Jacqueline, Superintendent Jacqueline Poria also gave an extensive report of these two topics. There was no recommendations made. Therefore, I would like to recommend that the acceptance of this report go through.
Okay. So trustee Gannett has moved the receipt of this report and I require a seconder to receive this report. Seconder?
I think you can pick one, Brian. We have several people.
Thank you very much. Okay. It's hard when you got a whole bunch of pictures on the screen here. Okay. Trustee Humphries, thank you very much, seconding this report. Any, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Seeing no dissenting votes then, the motion to receive the Program and Student Achievement Committee Open Session Report is carried. And thank you very much, trustee Gannett. Next, Equity and Inclusion Committee Open Session Report. I'll ask trustee Marjorie Adam, the chair, to present this open session report for January twelfth, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, Chair. The Equity and Inclusion Committee met on Tuesday, January twelfth, twenty-twenty-one to discuss only one item, which was an Indigenous education update. No recommendations were made, so I move that board receive this report.
Okay. So trustee Adam has moved the receipt of this report. I require a seconder to receive this report. Someone raise their hand.
Nick is offering.
Okay, thank you very much, Nick. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Just raise your hand. Okay. Thank you very much. The motion to receive the program and, sorry, to receive the Equity and Inclusion Committee Open Session Report is carried. And next, I'll ask trustee Leo Boland, the Chair of the Finance and Resources Open Committee, to present the Finance and Resources Committee Open Session Report for January twelfth, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, Chair Morris. The Finance and Resources Committee met on Tuesday, January twelfth, twenty-twenty-one to discuss the following items. Number one, stakeholder consultation related to renewed strategic planning process. And here, the director provided an overview of the consultation process with stakeholders, both internal and external. He provided a rough timetable to accomplish this. And number two, a lockdown update. This is given by senior staff as to what we are up to currently with COVID lockdown and at home learning. No recommendations were made. I move that the board receives this report.
Okay. So trustee Boland has moved the receipt of this report and require a seconder to receive this report. Sorry, who is that?
Dave Shields.
Okay, Dave, thank you very much. Down the bar, my sweet. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. The motion to receive the program, or sorry, the, to receive the Finance and Resources Committee Open Session Report is carried. And next, we have the Special Education Advisory Committee Report. And I'll ask trustee Gannett to bring that to us. Mike, you're, you're Mike?
My Mike.
The Special Education Advisory Committee Open Session met both December sixteenth, twenty-twenty, and January twentieth, twenty-twenty-one. There were no recommendations made. And therefore, I'd like to move that the recommend, that they, that this report be accepted.
Okay, thank you very much. Trustee Gannett has moved the receipt of these two reports and I require a seconder to receive these reports. Okay, trustee Kaiser? Thank you very much. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, the motion to receive the Special Education Advisory Committee Reports is carried. Next, we'll move on to updates. First of all, I'll ask the director to bring his update.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, the past month has demonstrated once again the adaptability, ingenuity and resourcefulness of our students, our staff and our school communities. As we transition from in-person learning at school to online learning at home, essentially as a result of the province-wide public health recommendations at the start of the holiday break. For the majority of our student population beyond those enrolled in remote synchronous learning, this represented once again a change in their learning environment. In spite of the challenges we faced during this transition period, especially as the holiday break had already started, our system has responded admirably as always. Examples of the wonderful adaptations include the sharing of a hundred and forty moments in history over the next hundred and forty days at Renford Collegiate Institute in celebration of the school's hundred and fortieth year of existence, with a series of tweets as a virtual thread posted for the school community as the, as well as the entire county and the student body of the school that began on the first of January, twenty-twenty-one, as well as the real-time, online witnessing and thoughtful debrief of a presidential inauguration in Mrs. Toner's grade eight class on Wednesday, January twentieth, twenty-twenty-one at A.J. Charbonneau Public School. Just two fine examples of the kind of learning continuing in a very dynamic and vibrant way in the online learning environment. Our gratitude goes out to all of our dedicated students and their supportive parents and guardians, as well as our committed staff for their incredible efforts over the past month. We're excited to be returning to schools this week and central departments, and we're working alongside one another in the resumption of public education in person across our system. Second point I'd like to share is with respect to the third quarterly transition point in the winter of twenty-twenty-one. The third quarterly transition point for both elementary and secondary levels will take place on Tuesday, February second. To date, the number of students engaged in in-person learning at school and remote synchronous learning at home have remained relatively stable throughout the second trimester with approximately eighty-six percent learning in schools and about fourteen or fifteen percent learning at home. It appears at this point in time, although we had a slight increase in the numbers since the decision-making point of January eighteenth, that the choice of mode of delivery made by parents and guardians earlier in the school year remains in place for their children with some minor variances in both directions. And Superintendent Cusino most recently updated us as a senior staff on the most recent request coming post the January eighteenth date with an additional forty-three requests to return to in-person learning at school and twenty-two requests to shift to remote synchronous learning at home. So again, approximately a hundred requests over the course of this past quarterly decision-making point, but really on balance relatively stable for the organization as a whole. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Happy to respond to any questions or queries.
You're on mute, Mr. Chair.
Well, I'm guilty too. Thank you very much. Next, we have the Chair's monthly update and that's included in your agenda package. First of all, our pivot to synchronous learning. To say that this past year has been tumultuous is an understatement, to say the least. As I write this update, as I wrote it last Thursday, the news on television was reporting that it was exactly one year ago that day that the first case of COVID nineteen was identified in the United States. Canada very quickly followed suit. I think it was a year ago yesterday. And our first case was, was identified in Toronto, I believe. So much has occurred in these past twelve months. COVID nineteen has been and is ravaging our, both our countries. Here in Ontario, we currently are under a stay-at-home order. Severe restrictions have been placed on the business and social lives of our communities and of course, how our education system functions has seen great tremendous change. Just as we were to begin our Christmas holidays, schools were told to pivot from in-class to online learning. Much stress was placed on our students, their families, our teachers and all the other education workers that make up our schools work, principals and central staff. Pivot they did and they all did their part to make it work. One thing did not change as we all faced the challenge of a lifetime. That was the dedication of all staff to make this work for students. We on the Board of Trustees extend our heartfelt thanks to all for going beyond the call of duty to do their best to make sure that our students are able to continue to learn. This truly has been public education at its best. We thank all employees of the board for what they do and for the selfless way they do it. We now are back in, back to in-class learning, thanks to all in Renford County who have heeded the advice of public health and through their actions have kept the incidence of COVID nineteen in our community to a low enough level to allow schools to reopen. To all of you, thank you. Next, teleconferences with Minister Leche. Every Monday afternoon, the Minister of Education and sometimes along with the deputy minister and officials from public health hosts a conference call with all board chairs across Ontario. Directors of Education also are invited to be part of them. Typically, the minister takes ten minutes or so to give an update and then takes questions from board chairs for twenty minutes or so. This is an important opportunity to learn what is happening, why it is happening, and to question the minister on a variety of items. Pastor Humphries, Vice Chair Kaiser and myself value these calls as an important two-way communication with the Minister of Education. Thirdly, the work of the board. While we focus on the health, and rightly so, of all our students and staff, we also firmly keep in mind the mental health of all in this existential crisis. We are taking all possible measures to ensure the mental health of everyone in our system. And then third, after mental health and the physical health of everybody involved, we are focused on student achievement. Whatever the mode of learning, as we go through the COVID nineteen experience, we work hard to make sure that our students have the necessary knowledge and skills to be successful in whatever they choose to do, whether that be in the world of work, the trades, college or university. We are engaging in a secondary review to better focus our efforts in preparing the students in our high schools. Also, we are engaging in a review and rethink of our strategic plan, the document that directs the work of the board for the next four years. Over the next month or so, we will be seeking input into this process from a variety of stakeholder and community groups. On a final note, we will get through this together. Education is a partnership between home and school. Collectively, we will do the very best possible for our young people. Stay well, stay safe. And now I'll ask our two student trustees for their update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had our student senate meeting last Thursday and it was very productive. The senators were able to contribute excellent ideas. A key point of the meeting that I would like to highlight is our discussion about the student trustee application advertisement. We came up with ideas to have each school have one grade ten or grade eleven who's staying for a victory lap to attend our virtual meeting. This gives them the chance to see what the student senate is like, as well as have a presentation about the role of a student trustee. Hudson and I will also make a short promotional present, video to advertise what the role is and our senate offered to share on their video announcements. We also have a plan for social media advertisement. We hope to encourage as many students as possible to explore the role of student trustee in the future and to just generally spread knowledge about the role.
All right, thank you. So we also had a few presentations at our meeting. Director Buffoni led a presentation on the results of the thought exchange that started in March of last year, which also included a follow-up discussion. The director also led us in a brainstorming exercise surrounding the new strategic plan. Amy Johnson joined us to give a brief rundown of her new role, as well as some of the upcoming projects she has on the go. And we wrapped up the meeting with a brief conversation about a pen pal initiative with members of Long Term Care, an idea that trustee Adam brought to our attention.
And one last item on OSTA ECO. The OSTA ECO Executive Council is on its way to a big project, which was actually released today, called The Volume of Our Voices. Our story submission form is published to present their ideas and the forum gives students the chance to share their experience with the impact of COVID nineteen, race inclusion and as well as gender and sexuality. This is a new type of project for OSTA since typically the surveys are for data collection. Instead, these stories will be shared in three volumes, one for each category. The stories will be then shared on our website with an interactive page. We will also make recommendations to the ministry and school boards based on the stories shared. The Public Affairs Court and I have put together a social media marketing campaign to promote students to share on their stories and the outreach team has a plan to get out the form to student trustees as well as to students from each board. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much, Jazlyn and Hudson, for your report. I'll now ask trustees Dave Shields and Marjorie Adam to give an OSPA update.
Do you want me to go first?
Oh, sure, I think so.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, the only thing I have to report is after our last meeting, our IT department made us aware of the funding issue with the OSTA PAC. So I've sort of taken a backdoor approach to OSPA. I sent an email off explaining our situation to OSPA staff plus the president, first and second vice presidents. And surprisingly enough, other trustees don't seem to be aware of this. President Kathy Abram, though, she, she did some research with her board and discovered that's an issue for them also. So, and the executive director Rusty Hich, he has also had conversations before with Nancy Naylor about this issue, but hadn't heard anything back. So between Kathy Abram and Rusty Hich, I think we're going to get some action on this. But anyway, we'll have to wait to see how that all turns out.
And Marjorie, did you have anything?
I don't have very much to report. We are busy in the work teams with all kinds of submissions to the ministry, the most recent being the one on the GSNs. And once again, we have to do all these consulting all over the province on very short order and then the staff put together the formal submission. I'm sure you all received a copy of our admission, our submission on the GSNs. The other thing I just wanted to mention, just as an aside, is that I was asked. The other thing I just wanted to mention, just as an aside, is that I was asked to sit on something an initiative of OPSPA to review the whole processes, almost a policy review kind of thing going on there too, with four subcommittees. And they asked me to sit on the how to set priorities subcommittee. And that's of interest to everybody, because what OPSPA does and what it pushes for with the provincial government is determined by the priorities, which are determined by trustees and by the Board of Directors. So I'm really quite interested and excited to be sitting on that subcommittee. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Just as a follow-up to Trustee Shields' presentation. That is certainly a, you know, very significant issue financially for all Boards. You know, that the educational software that, you know, came out of a separate fund from the Ministry of Education, all of a sudden now was part of our GSNs and essentially defunded dramatically. So it really puts all Boards, but especially smaller Boards like us, you know, at a significant disadvantage. I've tried the past two weeks to get a question into the Minister and his weekly, you know, calls. But the last two weeks, he's cut them short quite dramatically. So I'll be working with the Director and also the IT Manager here at this Board for, and send, you know, a letter to him. So thank you very much, Trustee Shields, for bringing this up to OPSA. And I'm sure eventually we'll get, get their attention.
Chair Morris, it's, it's Trustee Humphries here. Could I just add a couple of other things about OPSA as well, if you don't mind?
Absolutely.
Just to remind trustees that the Public Education Symposium is happening this Thursday. It is a virtual event this year, starting at ten o'clock in the morning. It wraps up at three thirty in the afternoon. And it is free of charge this year, which is interesting. And for those of you who have not looked at the agenda, our own Jonathan Ladder Root, Communications Manager, is on the agenda in one of the concurrent sessions on how to engage their community. So that should be quite interesting. The other thing I will note is that last evening, Trustee Boland and I did attend a session that OPSA organized in conjunction with Aus Good Hall and York University on intensive human rights program for school board leaders. And it was a program, there's two parts to it, actually. Part one was last night from five thirty till nine. And there's another section in mid-February, but it was, it was really excellent. Probably the, the section that was most interesting were some letters written by students across the, across the province outlining how racism and discrimination has impacted them. And then, following the reading of those letters, student trustees from OSTA ECO had some conversation around what they heard and what that meant. It was, it was really excellent. Then we had a keynote speaker and then broke into facilitated discussion groups. So it was an excellent program. And, and I know I certainly enjoyed it and, and it's given me, and I'm sure Trustee Boland as well, some food for thought about things that we need to think more about. And certainly with Trustee Adam as Chair of Equity and Inclusion, we, we probably need to spend some more time talking about those topics. So I think that's it for now. Thank you, Chair Morris.
May I? Trustee Adam.
Thank you. I'm so happy you mentioned that, Susan, and I'm very glad Leo was there too. I was registered for that, and when I did not receive the link or any further correspondence, I followed up what Pino sent us for, to the person to get the link. And it never did come. And I, I did that two or three times, and I didn't get it. So I was not there last night. But I hope that I'll be able to sort it out for the second session. I just wanted to explain myself, since obviously I should have been there. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, you know, Susan, Dave, and Marjorie for your, your report. Okay, moving on to correspondence, we, we have none. And then next, any other business?
Chair Morris, it's Mike.
Yes, indeed. Mike?
I neglected in my haste to bring up the highlights of the January twentieth SEAC Committee meeting. If I, if you, at some point during the meeting before the end, just give me a moment. I'd like to regress back to that open session report.
Well, I think we'll indulge you right now and you can, you can have it there.
I promise I'll be brief.
Okay.
Just some updates is that, yeah, the remote learning rate after Christmas, the first week, there was approximately seventy-nine special education students that were attending school. It jumped to eighty to ninety in the second week. As usual, in our SEAC Committee meeting, Principal Bill Smith of Special Services allowed his staff to speak extensively. I took a couple of highlights in the conversations. The Telkys continued to do a lot of sharing of resources. The Collaboration of Literacy Coaches in Ute to Shelly Gagne has been very, very helpful. The Special Ed Certs, there's been a IEP review audit, which has been going on. And the certs continue to meet in small groups every two weeks. There's still ongoing Google classrooms for the EAs, as well as association reports. Leah Hunt is trying to provide equitable resources for those who can't attend school. And Amy from the PMFRC, that, that group continues to have some tech issues dealing with servicing some of their clients from home. Other than that, I appreciate the extension to, to talk regarding the SEAC open session of January twentieth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Trustee Gannett. One thing I'd like to add, this Thursday, a very important day, is Bell's Talk Day. And Bell is going to donate five cents for every applicable text, call, tweet, and donate the proceeds towards mental health initiatives in Canada. So if you can, hop on your phone and do all your talking and tweeting and whatever. It's really a very important day. Any further business? Okay, and could I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Shields, I have a seconder. Susan Humphries, thank you very much. All in favor? This, this meeting of the, the Board for January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one is now adjourned. Thank you.